All right, we're gonna start the common council meeting. It is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. We are in City Hall Council Chambers. It is 6:30 and next item, yeah, it's 6:37 right now, I guess.
Whoops.
So, we'll start out with the invocation from Pastor Mike from St. Stephens and move on with the Pledge of Allegiance and the roll call. Please stand.
Mr. Mayor, it is a pleasure to be able to offer this invocation and I thank the City Council for continuing this tradition, just on behalf of the ministerium and my own personal thanks. Thank you. Let us pray. Holy God of our forbears, God of our mothers and fathers, our God, we call you by many names and worship you, or don't worship you, in many ways. All of it, a sign of your gift of diversity and freedom to the world, even as you call us to live together in unity. Help us discern those things that unite us and guide us in discussing those differences we have in ways that will build up this community and inspire others to public service. We claim to value diversity. Our national motto is "For Out of Many One." Give us ears to hear one another, be present here tonight, and do not let us take for granted the freedom you have given us, nor the responsibility to live righteously, justly, and peacefully in this gift of community. Inspire these, your servants, tonight to preserve the rights of all who come before them and set the hearts and minds of those who come here tonight to seek peace, justice, and community for all. You have called us to love one another. Remind us again that love is expressed in action and in words, which respect and build up the community. May a spirit of respect and of love prevail tonight and always in our life with one another in Merrill. Bless the work done here tonight. Bless the churches in Merrill. Bless and watch over the police, firefighters, and all first responders, and all who serve the greater good in this community. We pray in the name of the Spirit who calls us to serve. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Furmanek?
Here.
Mr. Lass?
Here.
Mr. Rick?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Present.
Ms. Rukowski?
Here.
All eight here.
Thank you. Next, we have common council meeting expectations. Clerk, could you please read those?
The City of Merrill respects the role of our elected officials. Alderpersons and department heads are committed to collaborating to provide our citizens with the best decision-making for our city's future. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation of all in attendance.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Public comment. Hearing none will move on to minutes from the previous meeting.
Consider placing the minutes from the following meetings on file: April 9th, April 16th, and May 3rd.
Motion to place the minutes on file.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to place the minutes of the previous meetings on file. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have revenue and expense report.
And these are the April revenue and expense reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the April revenue and expense reports.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the April revenue and expense report. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have general agenda items for consideration.
The first one is employee recognition. Terry Akey, 35 years, TB Scott Library. And the second is Thomas Tetson, 20 years at the Fire Department.
Want to thank those two long-term employees. It's very good to have employees that stick around that long. Next, moving on.
Discuss and consider hiring a facilities maintenance manager. This is being brought directly to the common council.
Ms. Reiki.
Our ordinance requires approval of any department head by the common council. We had 57 applicants for this position. We interviewed nine. We did offer the position to Taylor Burnett. He's here tonight. I guess he can come up to the mic if anybody has any questions for him. Myself and Lori interviewed all nine and reviewed the applications, and we feel that Taylor is the most qualified. So, it's our recommendation to you to approve this hire. I guess if anybody would have any questions of him. Taylor, you want to step up to the mic, just so everybody knows who you are?
Hi, my name is Taylor Burnett. I go by TJ. I'm from Merrill here, and I am just ready to work with all you guys and get to know you a lot better. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than willing to answer.
Have you been working in the district already, in the city, for maintenance?
I currently work for Church Mutual Insurance and Maintenance. I've been there just over five years.
Good.
Make a motion to approve the hire.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of Mr. Burnett for the facilities maintenance manager. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're approved. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Number three.
Okay, consider a street use permit for Golden Harvest Market to close Pearl Street from Main Street to Thielman Street for a customer appreciation event on June 1st, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. This is being brought directly to the common council.
Do they just put in the application later?
Yes.
Okay. How many years have they been doing this event?
Zero.
Zero?
No, this is the second.
I was gonna say, this is the second, I believe.
Last year, they had it too.
Yes.
I go there so often.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
I guess I would like to put it on note that, you know, it's two years in a row that they've been doing this now, and if they're gonna continue to do this, it should go through health and safety before it comes directly to common council if they can get it in quicker.
Chief Bennett, do you have any concerns with this?
Well, they usually have their arrangements, et cetera.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the street use permit for Golden Harvest Market on June 1st, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, health and safety.
Consider the change of agent application for Walgreens store number 10574, 101 North Center Avenue to Jeffrey C. Clapperich. The Health and Safety Committee recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Clapper, Nick Brick, to be the Walgreens representative.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agent. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consider a Class B liquor license for the Creative Spirit LLC, 129 North Prospect Street. The Health and Safety Committee recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Is Class B a servers? Can they serve, or is it just selling without opening?
They are here.
Corey, you gonna serve?
To bar.
Go ahead to bar?
Yep. They are here if anybody has any questions for them. Is anybody, I can have them come up, or is everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Okay. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three.
Oh, sorry. Consider a street use permit for Gesundheit Saloon, 1300 East Main Street, for May 18th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. The Health and Safety Committee recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four.
Consider a street use permit for Gesundheit Saloon, 1300 East Main Street, for August 17th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m., in conjunction with the 150th anniversary of the bar celebration. The Health and Safety Committee recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have placing the reports on file.
Consider placing the following committee commission reports on file: Committee of the Whole, Board of Review, Historic Preservation, Marketing and Communications, Airport Commission, Health and Safety, Personnel and Finance, Board of Public Works, Enrichment Center, Library Board, Parks and Recreation Commission, Festival Grounds, and City Plan.
Make a motion to place the reports on file. I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to place the reports on file. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinances, Tom?
First ordinance we have is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-59, polling places for a first reading. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 259, polling places. The changes are being District 1 changing the polling place to the Beerman Building at the Merrill Festival Grounds for Aldermanic and Supervisory and Aldermanic districts, as indicated and read in the amended ordinance.
Your Honor, I will suspend the reading of our...
Suspend the rules.
There we go. Suspend those rules, and go ahead and read by second and third.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and give the ordinance its second and third reading by title only. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Tom?
For a second reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-59, polling places. For a third reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-59, polling places.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I ask why we are looking to change the...
I can explain that. The reason being that, right now, 1 in 8 are at the Lincoln County Service Center, and John in Maintenance is the one that takes all of the machines and everything to the mark and to the Beerman Building. And so, it would just, it makes sense to have him just go to two places rather than three. Also, it's difficult to set up at the service center, and with the election, then the county clerk and the deputy clerk don't have time to put the rooms back together afterwards. So, if it's just at the Beerman Building, then there'd be four locations at the Beerman Building. And with the new equipment coming or being used, we require more electrical outlets, and that's a newer building, and we can set it up so we don't have issues with any power or anything.
My fear is that we look at what was a master plan a few years ago to move everybody down to Beerman Building, which I certainly don't want, but now we're up to four districts there?
Well, and the only reason that 1 in 8 are because 3 in 6 are already there, and they're already at the Beerman. And 1 in 8 are just up the hill, so we're moving it from up the hill down. And another reason is, we are more in charge of that building. If the county has any issues, we have to abide by their availability. With us owning this building outright, it's a city-owned building, we have precedence over anything that happens at that building.
Yeah. Was there a motion?
Is there any concerns from Police Department or anything with traffic around there? Or... I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second his motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
Aye.
Mr. Rick?
No.
Mr. Waits?
Aye.
Ms. Rukowski?
Yes.
Six out of eight.
All right, next ordinance, Tom?
Next, we have, for a first reading, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-36, Regulation on Length of Lawn and Grasses. The substantive changes are for the city's option to abate notices. Excuse me. The city shall now prescribe five days to abate the same before assessing costs by mowing, taking other remedial action. In Section 2 of F, the city shall cause within 30 days the city clerks to enter the charges on a tax roll. It also prescribes a new method for hearing, which is in Section D, which reads as follows: "If the owner believes that the city was in error for their actions with regard to notifying, mowing, and subsequently billing, they must request a hearing before the Board of Public Works," excuse me, may request a hearing. The request for said hearing must be made in writing to the city clerk's office within 30 days of the date of the invoice. When a hearing is requested by the owner of the property, a hearing will be held at the next regularly scheduled Board of Public Works meeting. At the hearing, the owner may appear in person or by a representative. The owner or representative will have the opportunity to contest the action of the city. At the close of the hearing, the Board of Public Works shall make its determination in writing specifying its findings, facts, and conclusions. Possible board actions include writing off the invoice, a reduction of the amount, or keeping the invoice total as billed."
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and give this ordinance its...
Second and third.
Second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and give this ordinance its second and third reading by title only. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Tom?
For a second reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-36, Regulation on Length of Lawn and Grasses. For a third reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 2, Section 14-36, Regulation on Length of Lawn and Grasses.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Do we have discussion?
I was gonna say, we have discussion here.
Sorry, long day.
I have a question. It says in here that the notices given to the owner, the occupant, or the person in charge of the property, who determines who that is so that we know that the notice is going to the right person?
Dustin?
Currently, we send notices to the owner listed on the county roll. If the occupant is different from that, we send a letter to the physical address, and we hang a door hanger. So, those are the three ways we've identified to get notice to them.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So, somebody goes on vacation for a week, comes back to a city bill.
If they mowed the lawn before they left, they wouldn't have an issue.
I mean, there are some lawns right now that are absolutely ridiculous when you're driving through town. So, I mean, we're not looking at, like, your grass only being, like, that tall. We're talking, like, pretty...
Eight, eight inches.
Eight inches, yep. This is simply reflecting how we currently handle the appeal process, the way it was written before. We never had anybody wish to appeal that way. It was always after the bill was sent.
We're not changing the rules, we're just changing how they can appeal it.
Because if I remember correctly, at the last Board of Public Works, someone tried to appeal a snow removal or something from 10 years ago?
Correct.
Yeah, we need to set a time limit on some of this stuff.
Is there a fee to appeal?
No.
Nope, not as far as that, more.
And a lot of this isn't to punish somebody for not mowing their lawn, it's to protect the neighbors from certain issues.
I don't see it like that, I'm sorry.
Well, that's what most of the ordinances are. It's not to punish, it's to protect the other property values.
Any further discussion? Hearing none all, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
No.
Mr. Rick?
Aye.
Mr. Waits?
Aye.
Ms. Rukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Seven, one.
The next ordinance is for a first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Section 30-37, Unauthorized Disposal of Garbage, Refuse, or Solid Waste. The amendment is in Section 30-37 sub-D, adding a new D. No person shall place a mattress, box spring, or similar item in the city-owned garbage carts for collection. Enter property found to have these items in their carts with the subject of fees established in the ordinance. The ordinance contains, again, the standard severability and repeal effective clauses.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Seeing we're really going to the mattresses with this ordinance change, I will make a motion to suspend the rules and give it a second and third reading by title only.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to give this ordinance its second and third reading by title only. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For a second reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Section 30-37, Unauthorized Disposal of Garbage, Refuse, or Solid Waste. For a third reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Section 30-37, Unauthorized Disposal of Garbage, Refuse, or Solid Waste.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion? A lot of this is driven with the landfill, is charging for mattresses, and box springs too, extra charges.
And it ain't cheap.
That weren't assessed before, so.
And that fee has already been defined and determined in our fee schedule?
It was. We just had never come across them stuffed in garbage carts before.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Aye.
Mr. Waits?
Aye.
Ms. Rukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Passed, 8-0.
All right, thank you. Tom?
Next, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 4, Section 32-91, Snow and Ice Removal from Sidewalks. For a first reading, the change would be that within 30 days after such, pardon me, sub-G, within 30 days after such costs and expenses are incurred and remain unpaid, the city clerk shall enter those charges onto the tax roll as special as provided by Wisconsin Statute 66.0907 sub-5. The new language relates to a hearing. If the owner believes that the city was in error for their actions with regard to notifying, clearing of the sidewalk, and subsequently billing, they may request a hearing before the Board of Public Works. The request for said hearings must be made in writing to the city clerk's office within 30 days of the date of the notice. When a hearing is requested by the owner of the property, a hearing will be held at the next regularly scheduled Board of Public Works meeting. At the hearing, the owner may appear in person or by a representative. The owner or representative will have the opportunity to contest the action of the city. At the close of the hearing, the Board of Public Works shall make its determination in writing specifying its findings, facts, and conclusions. Possible board actions include writing off the invoice, reduction in the amount owed, or keeping the invoice total as billed.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and give this ordinance its second and third reading by title only.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and give this ordinance its second and third reading by title only. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
For a second reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 4, Section 32-91, Snow and Ice Removal from Sidewalks. For a third reading, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 4, Section 32-91, Snow and Ice Removal from Sidewalks.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any discussion?
A question again? I'm assuming towards Dustin, probably. Same method of notification as to owner or resident or...
Yep, everything's the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Furmanek?
Aye.
Mr. Lass?
Aye.
Mr. Rick?
Aye.
Mr. Waits?
Aye.
Ms. Rukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Andrew Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Michael Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
8-0.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions.
We have one resolution. This is a resolution approving the adjusted Merrill Urban Area boundary. Whereas every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau defines the boundaries for geographic areas meeting the urban area criteria as published in the Federal Register. Whereas the Federal Highway Administration allows states to adjust the census-defined urban area boundaries for planning and funding purposes. Whereas the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, following the release of decennial census data, leads a process to adjust census-defined urban area boundaries within the state in conjunction with the FHWA Wisconsin Division. Whereas WISTOT works with local officials within the urban areas to develop and propose new adjusted boundaries for these areas. And whereas WISTOT developed a proposed new adjusted boundary for the Merrill Urban Area, and whereas officials from the City of Merrill and Lincoln County reviewed WISTOT's proposed new adjusted boundary for the Merrill Urban Area and provided feedback on this boundary. Whereas WISTOT made changes to the proposed new adjusted urban area boundary to reflect feedback received from the city and county officials. Whereas WISTOT is requesting approval of the proposed new adjusted urban area boundary by the City of Merrill. And whereas after approval by the city, the new adjusted urban area boundary will be permitted to WISTOT and FHWA Wisconsin Division for final approval. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Merrill, Wisconsin, its 14th day of May 2024, that the City of Merrill informs WISTOT that the newly adjusted boundary for the Merrill Urban Area, as reflected in the attached map, is hereby approved and adopted.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I have a question. How are the border designations used as far as city planning or expansion? What does this really mean?
It's mostly for classification of roads and how they're classified and what they're eligible for as far as grant and funding. That's how the DOT wants it to be. We kind of look at it as far as where do we see possible growth, possible need for certain roads to be classified that way. We did have some adjustments of the boundaries. I think Pope Road was one of them. Just looking into the future, and every 10 years, we make the adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have mayor's appointments.
Pete Locamon to the City Plan Commission, replacing Robert Ryman, term to expire 5/1 of 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointment. Any discussion? Hearing none all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have mayor's communication. May 18th, we have the citywide garage sale, Lincoln County Sports Club open house, and my favorite, Food Truck-a-palooza. We have 73 craft vendors, 17 food trucks, two bouncy houses, bratty manual, and live radio remotes, and a cornhole tournament at the fairgrounds from 11 till 7. Don't forget, the TB Scott Library has State Park Day passes and other events throughout the summer. The Merrill Enrichment Center on May 15th, I should check that, was sassy spoons and plant sticks. May 16th, sewing classes from 12:30 to 4:00. May 22nd and 29th, mosaic art class, two-part class. Please call the enrichment center for more details. Graduation is May 24th.